I declare this meeting of the Kuncha Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Council did have an executive session this evening before a regularly scheduled meeting for legal purposes. The first item on the agenda is a hearing regarding a waiver of off-street parking for 320 Fayette Street Gold Glow's Luxury Spa. Ms. Stettler?
Come up, hi.
Thank you. This is a hearing for 320 Fayette Street. The business, as Colleen said, is Gold Glow Goals Luxury Spa. The building is located in the Business Commercial Zoning District and the spa use is a permitted use. It's an interesting property because it is landlocked. There is another lot behind it, so there isn't any possibility of putting parking, off-street parking, behind the building. They will be, the business will be using the third floor. The first floor was occupied. I'm not sure if they're still there or not, but it was DePaulo Design and Planning. There'll be basically two employees, and the owners are here. Brandy is here, and she will be happy to answer any of your questions about the business.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good.
So you're only having two employees?
That's correct. My twin sister and I.
Okay. And your clients, are they walk-in appointments? How does that?
So we are by appointment only. Me and my twin sister still work another job, so our appointments are going to be by appointments only.
Okay. And what hours of operation do you plan?
So Monday through Thursday, they're from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, from 10:00 AM to about 2:00 PM.
Is this already an established business and you're moving to this location?
It is not. So it is a new establishment. We actually grown. I was working at a different location, so was she, and then we decided to kind of collab as twin sisters and licensed estheticians to begin our own business.
So if there's only two employees, how many patrons at any given time do you think that you would have?
Only two. So I can only service one an hour, and she can only service one at an hour.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Just the entrance, is it off of Fayette Street?
Correct. So there is an entrance right off of Fayette Street, and we do have a behind entrance, and you can walk up a stairwell that will come to our third floor as well.
So if council would like, I would need a motion to approve the waiver of off-street parking for 320 Fayette Street Gold Glow Luxury Spa.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Did you bring a list of your?
Bring cards? Perfect.
The next item on the agenda is the zoning hearing board report with Richard Barton, the chair of zoning hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening to council, borough manager, solicitor, the mayor, and everyone else here this evening. I was requested to supply you with a year-to-date report of the activities of the zoning hearing board, and I've pinpointed eight cases that we've handled. We've handled more than that since January, but I think these were some of the key cases of the year. And then I also have a couple of comments about recommendations for changes to your zoning code. How much of the report, I know you have a copy of the report.
Yes.
How much of the report would you like me to relay to you this evening?
Just the highlights.
The highlights?
Because most of us have gone through it.
I'd like to touch on just a few cases, then. I won't go through all of them. The 720 Fayette Street, a significant building here in the borough, of course, the former Borough Hall, now owned by the Howe Group, and that was a pretty significant hearing back on February 26th. They were here to get permission to lease space in that building for social and community events. And after a hearing from a number of neighbors about parking concerns, and also testimony from the owners about how they would use the building, we did grant the requested relief with conditions. The parking spaces on-site must be reserved for customers of that leased space from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM weekdays, and any off-site parking or agreements must be in writing and presented to your zoning officer, Ms. Stettler. There was also a continuance for the property at, let me step back for a moment. One-year extension was given to Corson Street Acquisition for the property at 400 West Elm Street. That is a 400,000-square-foot office building. Their relief was extended to March 19th of next year. The most complex and difficult case coming to the zoning board this year was the substantive validity challenge to ordinance 8-2017. That amended the R.O. district, and this was a suit brought by a number of neighbors to that property. In this case, the board had a split vote, which isn't often. We're normally unanimous or close to unanimous, but there was a division on the zoning board of opinion about this case that we could not get over. The challenge was supported three to two. The two dissenting members did file their reasons for dissenting to that decision, and that's how that went. This month, actually in September, for 400 East 10th Avenue, the zoning board approved the change of a non-conforming use from a first-floor photography studio to offices for a security company. And then the last case I'll mention is an application by O'Neill Properties for the development of the 200 block of Washington Street. That's Millennium Block A. This is an enormous project that received zoning relief in 2014 and in 2016. It has not gone for permits yet, obviously not under construction. They are seeking an extension of zoning relief. They indicated on September 16th that the plans would likely change for that site, so we gave them until December of this year to file revised plans and come back to the zoning board. So we'll see what their revised project looks like and what type of zoning relief they may need. In all decisions, the board takes seriously the general standards for zoning board review. And just for example, we consider the effects on neighboring properties. We also seek to grant only the minimum relief that's necessary for a project, and we often are successful in getting projects scaled back when we think that an excessive amount of development is being requested. I want to give thanks to, before I close, to Chris Stettler and to our solicitors, Michael Clark and Alex Glassman. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes for the zoning board to be effective, so they've done a great job for you. There are two recommendations for changes to your zoning code I'd like to make. Section 27-603.2 states that a quorum may be no less than two voting members, and I believe that should be three, since we have five votes at the zoning board. Secondly, section 27-613 gives an applicant six months after obtaining relief to obtain any and all permits in connection with that project; otherwise, they need to seek an extension. And I believe that is unrealistic in many cases today, to get permits within six months. So I would recommend that that be extended to one year, and if the board so supports that, and I think you'd get fewer requests for extensions that way. That's all I have. Do you have any questions or anything you'd like me to take back to the zoning board?
I do, Rick. I have a question.
Yes.
I was at the 400 East 10th.
Yes.
And for me, out of it, it came the worry about our residential areas.
Okay.
And businesses being allowed in them. Does zoning have any opinion on whether we should be looking at that, to tighten that up?
We have to look at every case on its own merits. In this particular case, the space had been a commercial use for many years.
But it wasn't for 25 years.
It wasn't, it wasn't, there was a break, and I admit that.
It was a grocery store.
It was a grocery store at one time, yes.
And then it was empty.
And then we gave it permission to be a photography studio last year.
Right.
They presented what we felt was compelling evidence, photographic evidence of the parking levels on the street adjacent to the building, and to me, that was convincing, that for the number of people using that office, that there would be sufficient parking.
Right, and I'm not questioning that decision by any means. I'm questioning, is it something that, as a council, for our ordinances, we should be looking at in the residential areas to protect the residents for incoming businesses?
And we also should have forced them to put the carport in the back of the house, because there is room to put a carport there. It's a grassy area.
Right.
So they could have got a couple cars off-street, but I went by there a couple times. It doesn't look like there's a lot of employees in there.
No.
But Colleen's right. We try to keep the commercial out of the residential.
And I agree. I think in certain districts, that makes sense, and particularly given the high demand for residential today.
Right.
You don't want to give up residential sites for commercial in those districts.
Right. Yeah, so that's, my question is, I think that's something that, as a council, we should be looking at, to protect those residential areas a little better. It'll make it clear all the way around.
And if they can find parking on the, on the, on the site, we should make them put the parking there.
Wherever it's accessible and safe.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I think we should look at it, because I wouldn't want to make that blanket statement, because there are places in town that make sense.
Well, mine is more for the residential, that are all residential, and I know that we have existing businesses in them. It's just been, it's a town. It's been like that for generations, but there will be new ones, and I think that maybe won't be, need to protect the residents from. So that's my question.
To Tina's comment, there are unusual properties, though, and there are exceptions, and we have to look for those, too.
Right.
So it's something we have to start looking at.
We need to start looking at, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Rick, I do have a question.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, about, so with O'Neill's property and the extensions.
Yes.
When they extend over periods of years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, which is what a lot of these projects did, because we had that downtime in between revitalization.
Well, from 2008 on, there was a real lull there because of the, you know, the economic troubles.
Right. So what, when they change and they, they present stuff to you, when it comes to different codes and rules of different things, do they have to follow, then, the most recent, or what they, they signed up for from 10 years? Like, help me understand that.
Well, so you're talking about projects that have not gotten plan approval yet. They're in the proposal stage only.
Okay.
Right. If they have not been approved, when they file their zoning application for zoning relief, they're subject to the laws on the books at the time they file their application.
If they're not approved yet?
If they're not approved.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Barton.
The next item on our agenda, Mr. Howe?
Oh.
Okay. If you could come up to the podium. Sorry. For a presentation for the recycling program.
Good evening. Good evening. Nice to see all of you at Borough Council, Mayor, Stephanie. Huff Associates, Ryan, who is my vice president, was going to do this presentation, but he's out of town, and so you have, you have the Huff at Huff Associates. We formed the company in 1982, and we started municipal grant services in, right with the start of Act 1 of 1, which started the recycling program in 1991. And a brief history of working with the, with the borough. We've been working with you for 12 years. Our first grant that we, you know, filed for you was in 2007, and we just filed the 2018 grant. And so for, that's 12 years. If you look at table one, you'll see that there was a dip last year in 2017, and we worked very hard to try to find out why, and it was really sort of a reporting situation with Republic Services. It wasn't that you didn't produce the recycling, it's just that they didn't report it to us. And as much as I sat in their office and demanded that they review the data, they wouldn't, they wouldn't change that. And so now we're back on track. It should have been around $50,000. If you look, there's a normal growth to this, and this year, we're filing a grant award for $86,779, $78. And we filed that last week in Harrisburg. So we think that's just an anomaly, that one-time data situation. On table two, it shows that the commercial tonnage has been growing very rapidly. It's sort of on a steady incline up, and the residential recycling is fairly flat, fairly, you know. And we need to, it would be best for your grants if you had more residential recycling, because that, the formula is really driven by residential tonnage. The more residential, that matches the commercial. So if you have excess commercial, it's only worth $10 a ton. That's just the way the formula works. So you have excess commercial that you could match with residential, and those residential tons would create maybe $70 or $80 per ton. So that brings us to the health of the actual recycling program in Pennsylvania. The legislature got rid of the sunset provision, so the recycling fee is going to be in existence for, until something really dramatic happens. And so we expect the program to continue. The 2020 census will have a small effect on the grants. Again, we've been using the 2010 for this whole tenure period, and so the 2019 grant, which we file in 2020, would probably use the 20, and I don't know, your population's going to increase substantially, or just, well, it'll increase. So that'll, that'll drive it down just a little bit, but it'll only be temporary. I assume as, as we continue to go, we'll make that up in a short period of time. Okay, so basically, I had some other comments that, in general, people want to recycle, they like to recycle, they need more information on how to recycle. And this is particularly true of millennials, and I know you have a lot of millennials moving into it or in the community as it is. So if we did an educational program, or if you did an educational program for, maybe targeted for them, that's how you could boost this residential recycling tonnage. And with that, any questions about our services? You have a good program.
Thank you.
You're doing very well, and I think you serve your, your residents and a lot of your commercial business as well.
Thank you.
I know that, I do have one question. I do have one question.
Yes, okay. I didn't know where it was coming from.
Sure person. You mentioned the census and the population increase, and, and maybe I should know this, but since I don't, I'm going to ask. We have a lot of condos now, and that's private recycling. So how does that population increase affect us if we don't do their recycling?
Well, they, they would still be counted in the census, which would, again, would affect the formula, the state formula, because they basically say there's eight tons of waste, point eight tons of waste for each person. So, you know, if you, you have more people, there'll be more waste, and that drives your recycling percentage down.
So if these places have private haulers that do theirs, and then they take it and drop it off, does that get credited back to our community? Or does it get credited to that private hauler? Is there something different from that?
That's, that's our job. We go out and
That's our question.
Talk to all the haulers. We try to keep on top of who's in the, in the borough, who's collecting. We periodically make visits around apartments and condo-type facilities, and if they have private haulers, we'll see either their bins, names on the bins, that kind of thing. We make sure that we'll ask them for their recycling tonnage.
Okay.
And the real trick there is, a lot of those people would report it as commercial. The haulers would report it as commercial because they have a single payer.
Right.
But it's really a residential facility. So we, we then educate them and say, hey, report this as a, as a residential facility.
Right, because that affects how much our recycling is showing. Okay.
Yep.
That was.
So we want the residential tons in, in that category.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
So you're showing us year over year. Do you take it down to the month over month level? And the reason why I'm asking is with our new recycle cans and that whole push that we had, I wonder if we can see if there was a tick up to say, hey, that get-out-in-the-field worked, so let's get out in the field more, kind of thing. Do you have that data down to that level?
Unfortunately, we don't. We only, we only collect the annual data. But, you know, you, your staff should have the monthly data for the collections that you make, so you probably see that, any bump there.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Mr. Sokolowski?
So in your uploads, you received information about the active shooter. We're going to close that out finally, so that, that actually was a very big success. I think, speaking for everybody on the emergency management team, I think that turned out to be a lot better than we thought it was going to be. We have a lot of information that we got from the different agencies that were involved, from the FBI, Montgomery County Emergency Management, and our municipality. Sergeant Connor specifically took the lead for this, and I think it was admirable at how much time he put into it, and we did get enough information out of this to change the way emergency management was going. We already started some of the changes. You've had, some of the changes were presented to you in the capital budget and in the operations budget. Things like computers were talked about, needs for the emergency management department that we're going to have. We've already looked at things, even including this building, and how the emergency management center's going to operate inside a building like this. It was somewhat designed for this, but, you know, there are things that are going to have to be tweaked. That's going to be a long-term thing. Some of the short-term things we got out of it, and we're doing, actively doing now, is from the active shooter scenario, things like use of tourniquets and think, I think, really things that nobody really wanted to talk about, but we did, and we purchased tourniquets, 25 of them, so we're going to have them in all employee vehicles eventually. Narberth Ambulance is going to train our employees to use these tourniquets, and then we're going to get trained on the AEDs. We already had a group trained on the AEDs. Chief Metz provided an officer who does AED training, so we've already started that. The goal here is, when you have a scenario such as this, which is, for lack of better terms, mass casualty, whether that's an active shooter outside of this building, or we have an active shooter, hopefully not, but potentially in this building, we have enough people that know just enough to save somebody if we have to. We're going to purchase some things called stop-the-bleed kits. They're, we're going to get trained by Narberth Ambulance on how to do that, and, you know, potentially we'll have 20, 25 employees that'll have at least basic knowledge on how to use that if it comes up. There's some examples of, outside of our area, that recently, a Public Works employee in, I think it Harvard Township, had a, they had an incident where he lost a limb, and somebody used a tourniquet in order to, to prevent him from losing his life. So we want to get as many employees involved in that, and I think that us being proactive as emergency management and getting the information we got from these kind of training events is going to move to that, in that direction. Like I said, we did some capital expenditures. Radios were a thing that we learned from that event. That's already been implemented. We got into a secondary digital system that's already inside the building. We're going to be completely going over to that within the next year. So we'll have not only the county radios for emergency situations, but a secondary system where everybody in the borough can talk to each other, and it, the repeater is in our building, so we control everything. We also are going to, we also talk a lot about pre-planning. We pre-planned this building. We identified all the high-hazard buildings in the borough of Kuncha Hocken, and they're going to get put in a Blazemark system. Kristin from the code department is doing a lot of that. That system's going to include pictures of areas that, when we have a mutual aid situation, they'll be able to push that up, punch that up on their computer, and see where, what they, where they need to go. Doorways are included in that, hallways are included in that, anything to identify a location where an emergency personnel could go. So that's a big part. Blazemark is something that you, you had, the borough had paid for several years back. It's going to be fully implemented by, by, in the next year. I think the big thing for today, for me, and then if you have any questions for these guys, is we're going to go to this, the new identification system, or notification system called Code Red. It's actually going to start tomorrow. Plymouth Township has it. Basically, you'll get, people will be able to sign on, and they'll get notifications when there's an emergency situation in the borough of Kuncha Hocken. And we're setting policies for that, how that's going to work, and what exactly an emergency is, and we've, Chief Metz is, we're going to have a lot of discussions about that, because sometimes too much information's not good, and sometimes not enough information's not good. So it's going to take a little while before we fully implement it, but we're going to start a database as of tomorrow. It's going to go on a website, and you'll be able to click on the link, put in your information, and we'll go from there. It's going to be part of our rental ordinance. It'll be on our rental applications. You'll be able to click or check off the fact that you want notifications when you, since 40% or so of our town is, are rental properties, they'll be able to click off, or check off the fact that they want notifications, put in their information, we'll automatically put them into a database. Kate is setting up a page. Eventually, it'll be on our website, which will have our Code Red, it'll have the county's 911, active 911 system in it. It'll have any other informational or emergency links for the county or the state on that page, so you'll be able to sign on for as many as you want. We're also planning on having several community events. Marshley Towers was one of the places that was identified, community events at the community center, where we'll bring in staff from Kuncha Hocken. We'll ask Montgomery County to come in, and they'll help people click on the link, put their information in, get them signed up, because a lot of people have problems with that. So they're very willing to do that. Montgomery County's very willing to do that, and we have people that are going to be trained in order to do it. So we're going to start that sooner than later, and hopefully by January, we'll have a huge, we, right now, the database, believe it or not, is 5,400. But a lot of those numbers are problematic. They're old numbers, they're commercial numbers that, they've basically pulled these off of, the old white pages are out of, off the internet somewhere. They're, they're going to tweak those. We're actually going to send out a, an alert to those phone numbers, and when those phone numbers do not contact us back, we're going to eliminate them and bring it, bring it down to where it's, we want a good database, and a good database that we keep up with. So this is going to allow us to do that. When we have snow emergencies, you'll be able to put that on, send alerts out to anybody. It's, it's open to, we have an unlimited usage. We bought an unlimited usage, so it's good for all businesses as well as residential. So anybody, any of the businesses in town will be able to sign up for it, and they'll get alerts. I don't know quite what the area is, but just guessing, within 10 or 15 miles from the borough of Kuncha Hocken, you will still get the alert. That's a big thing for us. We have some scenarios that are going on around us where these things probably would, will be very helpful. Again, that'll start, you'll start seeing that on the website as of tomorrow or the next day, and you'll be able to click on the links. All the Bobby Joe Merciades is going to help people who call the office and get them signed up. It's going to be trial and error. This is a pretty, it's a relatively simple system to use, but we'll probably, as a one-square-mile borough, maybe use 30 or 40% of it. Places in Florida have it where they're, you know, 200, 300 square miles. But we'll, we're going to, we'll put it in, hopefully. It's a good, it's a good use, and that came out of this. I mean, that was one of the first things that me, Sergeant Connor and I talked about, was how do you identify, or how do you notify the people across the street from our elementary school that there's an active shooter inside the school? school that there's an active shooter inside the school? And, you know, the county system's okay, but it's the county system. We don't have control of it. This, we will have control of.
That's great.
Any questions on that? Okay. Any questions for Sergeant Lennon or Carter?
Either one. I noticed in here that you said you had trouble with your radios on the inside. And, and I'm wondering if you had used a 911 go-between? Like you radio to the 911 and the 911 goes to the next officer and relays what is going on or what they need inside or outside?
The radios, the channel that we operate on is our standard radio frequency.
Okay.
So we replicate it real live, although it wasn't our primary channel we use every day, like Sergeant's using right now. It's the same frequency base. So we were dealing with exactly what we would deal with if it happened live, which broadcast to a tower, it gets repeated to the county dispatchers, and then they broadcast the same way back. So the deficiencies we see with that frequency are very typical with the type of material and buildings that we operate in, such as the school. It's very difficult to go into the, the larger high-rises. We have the same problem, especially with the interiors. We can't talk to the county. We have to rely on just working on, you know, kind of like base level communication. Sometimes we've had to use cellular cell phones to talk to the county and get our messages out. It's just a flawless system that we've gone accustomed to, that emergency operations are aware of. But we work with what we, we have, and we have contingency support. Not the best, but just we expect it.
I'd like to expand on that. Part of this, there's the technical side of it. When you get inside hard buildings, sometimes your radios don't work. We all know that. So, but the other part of this is, we discussed that when you are in that environment and there are stressors such as a fire alarm going off, decisions to have to be made, and everybody's amped up a little bit, it's easier to have a face-to-face conversation with somebody or to yell down the hallway than to call them on the radio. Because one, they might, you know, they might not hear it, they may not respond to it. And if he's right there or she's right there, talk to them. You know, like that was also part, it wasn't just the technical side. It was operating in that environment. You weren't being stealthy. It wasn't important what communication was. So you can yell it to somebody or face-to-face with somebody, that's a better way of communicating.
And I can vouch, you did.
Yeah.
Our building here is an example of that. I mean, this is a building built in 1965. It's all concrete. There are sections of this building, you're not going to get cellphone service in. Radios will be difficult. So even this building that we're in, you have to identify or you have to upgrade in order to make cellular service right for emergencies and for radios. And the repeater system that we're, we used, there's an outside antenna here and it's a digital system. And we're going to have to buy a second one eventually and put it somewhere on the northern side of town. We'll have full coverage on the secondary system, but the primary system with the county, I know that there's always difficulties in some areas.
And I'll assure you that the radio system we operate with now, currently with the county, has never been better. It's, it is good, but there are times. An elevator, hard buildings, stairwells, it can affect it.
So now that the active shooter one's behind us, by January, we're hoping to identify the scenario for, for 2020. And there are several things that, we've, we've, we have changed the emergency management a little bit that we, all meeting is agree. Sergeant, Chief Mets is there, sergeants, both sergeants are there. Dave Lennon is the deputy emergency management coordinator. The chief, the fire chief is there. We try to get the fire police, we've talked about all the time, that, that we try to get them involved in it. If they, if he's available, he'll be there. Public Works is there. The code department's there. We're getting everybody in the room to discuss everything that's going on. The landscape of this borough, if you haven't noticed, has changed, is changing substantially. But it's not changing over a two-year period. It's gradually changing. So we are gradually changing how things are going to be done. And we've, we've probably now with the Just a Sore project, we've probably re-did the Blazemark two, three times, just so we know, just so we know how ambulances are going to get in there, how the police are going to get in there, and how fire department is going to get in there in case there is an emergency. Any questions?
So my question is to Sergeant Lennon relating to the EOC needs and the more infrastructure, radios, TVs, computers. So we sat in the EOC for a little bit, and I know that it was a drill, but when you're talking about more equipment, is it more equipment for the people that will be stationed in the EOC? Like how will that additional equipment look or be used? And then is it designated specifically for the EOC functions? Or are you thinking to borrow equipment? If you could talk a little bit about the pros and cons of having designated equipment for an emergency situation versus borrowing and pulling things into a room during the emergency?
We would obviously want dedicated equipment. We've talked about it, budgeted, and hopefully we're, we're actually going to get it pretty soon. We want dedicated stuff that we know that is, is not going to get compromised by, you know, some computer virus or somebody else using it. And it's available for us when we need it. The equipment that we would have in there is mostly based on, you know, based for communication purposes. We can have computers that'll actually run our radio system. We have software that we can install to, to run our radio system and monitor it. We have, some of the equipment that you saw there that day was borrowed from the county. So we would kind of try to purchase our own, have our own infrastructure for that.
Kate, talk about priority dispatch, what that's about, when, you know, the county's overwhelmed or what happens there.
So a number of times recently, the county has gone to priority dispatch, mostly on weather-related events. So the county gets overwhelmed, so sometimes they don't have the manpower to actually dispatch or based on weather, their equipment actually will go down. So this was one of the major reasons we started talking about the second digital channel and bringing it back. We used to actually have a second channel and it was underutilized, and, and we're going to try to readdress that now. So what happens when the county goes to this priority radio is that they don't actually even dispatch over the radio. So unless someone is actually in front of a computer, then we wouldn't actually, we wouldn't get the call. So that forces us to be in the car at all times and physically sitting there and watching the computer waiting for a call. And if we can't communicate on that radio to the other officers, that means really every officer has to sit there in their car and just kind of communicate through a cell phone and watch this computer. So if we have our own EOC that's designated, when the time occurs, we have an officer or emergency management sits in the EOC, and we, we basically become our own dispatch. We now have software that communicates with the county, so we can directly, we can, they can send us the call information. We can update the call information and we can send information back to them. And then with the secondary radio system, we can essentially dispatch fire, public works, EMS, and police from our, from our EOC.
It also, one of the things, when they go on that priority dispatch, it kind of removes something that we use all the time, and that's the dispatcher. So the dispatcher does a lot of things that we ask them to do. Make phone call contact, Pico, call Public Works, whatever, you know, things like that. It takes that away. So if you're set up and ready to go and kind of do your own dispatching through computer, you know, that we're already using now, it just makes sense when they're overwhelmed. We're talking big weather events, like countywide, you know.
And the county's not objecting to this. The county's pushing us. They want the municipalities to be primary when it comes to these things.
It improves our ability to serve. That's what we're doing.
A number of municipalities are already doing this on a regular basis, so we feel it's somewhere we need to, we need to be.
At the, at the end of the, the goal here is if that's a scenario, and, and more than likely, that will be the scenario. It will be a snow, snow situation, and the entire town will be bogged down, and there'll be rotation of people in and out. We'll have to have an EOC because if it's 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon, the county will get destroyed with calls. So we want to have everything implemented or have everything available to make that happen. The county has done recently, I think, a great job with putting some things into play for us. Road closures are going to be able done by emergency management. By emergency, we'll type it in, put the information in. The last thing you did was the freight, or Fun Fest, yeah. Dave put in the fun, put all the information into the system to the county from his computer, put everything that he needed to put in. They have, they opened up a system where both log, we can both log on and then allow other people to log, to, to use it, where things like the Fun Fest, everything gets put in. So if they get a call that this street's blocked, this street, it doesn't, there's no congestion on their part. They know because he's already put all the information in that they need. And that'll have, that, there is a very big push from going to emergency management meetings to make sure that the municipalities know that the county is secondary. If you need help from the county, that is not your primary source. You're your primary source. You take care of your problem if you can, then you reach out to the county and they have resources. Fueling fire trucks, we just had this at the last emergency management meeting, didn't know that was an issue. It's an issue. When Salter's caught on fire in Lower Providence Township, it was an all-day event. The trucks started running out of gas. They weren't signed on for refueling. They had to figure out a way to get fuel trucks there. The county sent a document to Ms. Checo and didn't really explain the whole procedure and what that, it meant to be a refueling agency. And basically what it means is the county will do it secondarily. They'll, they'll develop a plan for you and they'll have someone come out. But you're the primary. So from that, we purchased some equipment so that we, or the Public Works Department can actually refuel fire trucks temporarily. And so we need to go into that secondary methodology. Didn't cost us a lot of money, but when you hear what happened in Lower Providence, it's a little tight down here. It's going to be hard to get a tanker into these areas. We have a way to make that happen now. So those are the things that's, that, that slowly but constantly come from these kind of meetings. Nobody thinks about these things until they happen, but they don't necessarily happen in Conshohocken. If we find out they happen in other areas, we can bring that in. And that's what, I think that's the goal here. Okay? Anything, George?
I was going to say, this drill overall, it, it really is cutting out. Because if you talk to any of your, you know, your partners in government, they can be, nobody's doing it. It's really important that it's done. And it takes, it took a commitment from everybody, all of you, to fund it because it was pretty expensive. But, you know, we learned a lot from it. And the first bullet point here says that no agency declined cooperation. Anybody we reached out to, Sergeant Connor in particular, Philadelphia Aviation, the FBI, all the, you know, the volunteer fire departments, everybody wanted to be involved with this because it's needed and no one's doing it. And it's really important. And it was valued. It really was. And we, we are all trained in active shooter. We've had the opportunity to do that and practice it, go into empty buildings and use it, and even do it, you know, around here when we can. So we're familiar with that. An exercise where you're face-to-face with wounded people, EMS, fire, EOC, all of that combined, we don't get the chance to do. It was, it's really unique. You know, you should cry yourself because you're doing something that no one else is doing.
You just took away my thank you, George.
Not them. They, they.
That's what I mean. You covered it all. And for me, it is amazing that it was our borough that took the initiative and our police department that, that did all that and organized it. And I, I personally got to see it, thank you Sergeant Connor, firsthand all day, which was invaluable and also very daunting. But the fact that it was our police department and all of our services says so much for all of you. And I know that we all sincerely appreciate what you did. It was amazing, so.
Our pleasure. I appreciate the kind words. And one thing I had to make sure that, I wanted to publicly recognize was the volunteers, the civilian volunteers that come in. Every single one of them, when we finish the operation, says, keep my number at the time.
Right. They did a great job, yeah.
Seeing, seeing the method acting of some of the people, it was impressive, but yeah.
Your son was impressive. He was.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just remember, at the end of that, the, the community center, there's 153 people there.
Right. The scope of, of everyone that was involved in it was amazing. And we're, us being one of the smaller municipalities and we pulled in so many different branches and different municipalities is just amazing. And to see it all work that, and I know it wasn't perfect. Not that I know that personally, but I wouldn't know if it was right or wrong watching it, which I did. But I know that you guys, for you, it was invaluable in learning what else you need to do. But to be able to do that from just Conshohocken is just, it's amazing. That was a great, great thing for everyone, so.
Yeah, you made us all think.
Yes.
And, and come up with things that maybe weren't being touched on.
One of the notes I had here, we're talking about some of the things that were immediately addressed. And the big line item that I had gotten from several officers who were involved, it makes you realize that you don't need a lot of money to fix small problems. Doorstops. I wanted to make sure we had doorstops, but in our, in our kits that we bring out because the door kept closing on people's.
It did, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that was, that's an easy, I went to Harper Freight and grabbed a couple bags of them and quick fixed them.
There you go, yeah. Simple things.
My thanks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, guys.
Craig, one, one quick question. Can you go back to the Code Red and how that, you said you're going live with that tomorrow?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? How it's what?
That the whole, the, just a couple of bullets on how that process is going to work.
So the, the process right now is, and unless we run into a snag, what will happen is, starting tomorrow sometime or the next day, you'll, on our website, there'll be a link that will allow you to click on the link and put in your information, how you want to be contacted by Code Red. Things like text messages, it'll do text messages, it'll do cellular phones, it'll do your home phone. All of that'll be, all that, and all your information that, that's necessary will be a, you, you'll have to input. Once that, that will, we're going to start developing a database. So there's two stages here. The, the one that's confusing is the, the one that they put in. They already have a database. And what's confusing to me is how they came up with 5,400 numbers. And we're going to have to purge a lot of those numbers we know. So we don't want to have a, we don't want to have a huge number of numbers that we're going to be putting out alerts to, and some of them aren't going to work, or they're going to be recycled to somebody else who doesn't want alerts. So we want to limit that. So starting tomorrow, you'll be able to put them in. Then we're going to have some community programs where members of the borough administration will attend and help people who cannot, who aren't able to put that kind of information in. One of the, one of the things we identified was the bingo on Mondays at the community center. That was one of the first things we talked about. Then people at Marshley Towers, people that just, you know, might have a hard time with the links. Most people will not have an issue with that. They'll get their, they'll see it. A lot of people want this, and have been asking for it for a while. They'll be able to put their information in. And we are not, we'll announce when it's going to go live, and it's going to be tested before it goes live. And once it goes live, then there will be certain people in the administration that'll be in charge of making sure that when a message does go out, it's a correctly formatted message. That's all I'm going to say.
Is it Conshohocken-specific messages or is it county messages?
It is, it is Conshohocken-specific messages. That's why we're going to allow, that's why when we do these programs, we're going to have people there from the county that will, you'll be able to download their system, their 911 alerts, which is more county-wide. You know, you, I, I get them from Lower Providence Township because I'm signed up on. I get some from Abington. I'll get some from Sheltonham. Depends on who you're signed up with. But those are going to be different. But we want people to, because those have some unique features that people in town would, would want. And not everybody, some people live in town but work outside of the borough and would want alerts at the place that they work. So we're going to offer that through the county, bring them in and, and offer that up. But at the end of the day, the Conshohocken one will be specific. It'll be- It'll be robotic messages, or Sergeant Connor, with his deep voice, has already offered several times to be the guy who puts out the, uh, the pre-recorded message for this whole thing.
So, I'm guessing we'll then have policies around messaging. Um, but would it be beneficial, um, in snow, like emergencies? Would we, would, uh, a use of it be, "Hey, everybody on the 400 block of Springville Avenue, move your cars and we'll plow the parking," like, the places where we're challenged with parking that we hear that digging out and replowing it, is, would that be a use for this type of tool?
It can be. Plymouth Township uses it. You, uh, the chief has told me that he live, when he live in Plymouth Township, they tell you to move your car from this side of the street to that side of the street. Yeah, we can do that. But again, Conshohocken is rather unique. We, we want to make sure that that's feasible. It might not be feasible to do, let's say, on Hector Street. Cause there, everybody else is parked on the other side of Hector. There is nowhere to move the cars. So, we have to, it's going to be policy-specific. Nothing is going to go out until we have thought it through numerous times. Every time we've sat down and talked about, "Well, let's do it this way," there is a snag. There's a reason why not to do it that way. Um, I'll give you an example. I spoke to a she, a police chief in the northern part of the, the county. They put out a message, uh, about an active shooter situation in their municipality. And they put it out saying, to the residents around that school. There's an, there's a, uh, situation at the school, shelter in place. That was the message. A few minutes later, all the police showed up and they're walking down the street. Well, every one of those homeowners walked outside and said, "Why do we have to shelter in place?" That became problematic. So, that would, may have not been enough information. You have to get, figure out whether you're going to give enough information, what type of information. Too much is not good, not enough is not good. And then, there's always the follow-up too, which the chief had pointed out to me, had happened in northern part of Montgomery County too, where the police department actually just forgot to notify the residents, "Oh, yeah, it's over. You can, we'll, we'll pull the shelter in place." So, people, it was like, I think, going on 12, 14 hours before the notification actually went off. So, it, it has to be managed. It's, it doesn't sound like it's a lot, but it can cause a lot of headaches for a lot of people if it's not done right. So, we're going to work through the policy as we're getting, as we're developing a database.
Well, we're saying, a man in here, that's an evil scout. I want to be at, say that.
Oh, how nice. We've had two now, evil scouts.
You're in the elite club.
Yes.
Less than, uh, what is it, one half of a percent? One, one, like, one, ten, no, one, 100th of the population.
Yeah. It's quite a feat.
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
President Leonard, the next item on the agenda are the interviews for the towing services. We sent out an RFP, um, requesting proposals for towing contractors. We currently have two towing contractors. The RFP generated two submissions, and those two candidates are here tonight. The first one being Mr. Bo from EVB Towing.
Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, guys.
Kevin, what's the biggest challenge you face as a municipal towing contractor?
Uh, there's certainly multiple challenges, but, uh, having the ability to react immediately at a moment's notice to multiple vehicle collisions or lanes blocked, uh, and being able to have the people available to respond immediately to clear the highway. There can be nothing happening right now. And, you know, you can get a two or three-car accident, overturned tractor trailer, and you have to be there right away. So, that's the, the emergency response nature of our business.
Do you have enough drivers now?
Uh, we, we have always had enough drivers. We have over 50 full-time employees. Um, we have over 30 tow trucks. Uh, we tow for multiple municipalities. We also have an exclusive contract with the Pennsylvania Turnpike where we are the sole provider for a 20-mile stretch of turnpike from Narstown to Downingtown, along with contracts with PennDOT and various other agencies.
Kevin, how do you handle individuals who have difficulty covering the cost of the towing charge if it's applicable?
So, typically what we do, uh, that happens a lot, and that's a great question. Um.
I know.
A lot of times, that's a older vehicle without insurance coverage. Uh, so usually when the people show up, uh, we'll ask them to pay the towing fee. We usually waive the storage charge if the car is totaled. And we say, "Just hand the title over to us." Cause then we'll get, you know, a couple bucks in scrap for the vehicle, but the folks don't have to pay the, you know, if it's sitting there for two or three weeks, the storage fee is exceeding the value of the car. So, we're always flexible with that. If we can get paid for the tow fee, that covers our cost to tow it in, um, and end up with the salvage portion. We just waive that fee for folks that can't pay it.
Okay.
Is, is that decision by committee? Is it on the spot?
I'm pretty much the, I'm the committee.
Kevin's the committee.
Right. But if the question goes into somebody else, does, does that have to come to you and you decide?
My staff would call me and I'm available 24/7.
Right away.
Yeah. But it, it, generally, uh, if it's, they, they have the authority if it's an older vehicle and it does not have full coverage. As long as the people are going to give us the title, they'll just pay the tow fee.
So, Kevin, are you affiliated with AAA or other insurance companies?
Um, so, we, uh, there's no affiliation really with insurance companies per se.
Okay.
We do accept AAA on the turnpike only because of that contract.
Okay.
Um, we do not tow for AAA in the counties or in the area, just because it's not cost-effective. Um, but what we can do, if we tow a vehicle from an accident, uh, you know, usually the, the vehicle's either towed to our yard, and if it's a later model vehicle, the insurance company will pick it up, or they'll have us tow it to a body shop. The body shop will then pay the, pay the bill. Um, if the motorist wants AAA and they can move the car off the side of the road, they can get, you know, they have that choice or that option.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Kevin, do you have the capability to provide services ranging from disabled, disabled vehicles to complex, um, commercial vehicles?
We do. So, we have light, medium, and heavy-duty wreckers. We have six heavy-duty wreckers that can tow tractor trailers. Uh, part of our contract with the turnpike is we have to be able to handle, uh, overturned tractor trailers, uh, incidents where cargo spills out. We have cargo cleanup equipment. Um, I've been towing for Conshohocken for probably 16 or 17 years. I think we had one overturned tractor trailer in the town a long time ago. But yes, we do have that capability. Yeah.
I knew. I just had to ask for everybody else. Um, I have one more question. I, and obviously you just said you've been doing this for a long time. Are there any recommendations that you would make, um, towards how, um, things are done between the towing company and the borough? And, like, is there communication problems or coordination? Is there anything that you would recommend that we change or?
I really have no recommendations on, on changing anything for any of the towns we currently work for. It's a pretty smooth process the way it works right now. Uh, the response times, you know, 15 minutes is, is reasonable. Um, certainly, we're close by. Um, it, it, it works pretty well the way it is. Yeah.
And then I just have a final question. Um, do you have any special interest groups that would be considered a conflict of interest with the borough? Are you a part of any special interest groups that would be considered a conflict with the borough?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad he's not a camera tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I assume you're going to conduct the interview? You're going to ask the questions, correct?
Unless you, do you have questions for us?
Colleen, you know I.
I, I shouldn't ask that question. I know.
Okay.
So, Jane, what's the biggest challenge you face as a municipal towing contractor?
To make sure that you have someone available at all times to meet that 15-minute ETA. And what we're finding, since a lot of the police departments no longer make the calls, that everything has to go through the county system. And unfortunately, that's not considered a priority. I guess if someone's, you know, it, it, more serious call than what we are. So, it kind of, I think, goes down the line. So, there could be seven or eight minutes of elapsed time from the time that the police officer is asking for a tow truck versus when we get the call, which then turns into more than 15 minutes.
Right.
And that does create a problem.
Okay.
Um, but it's just making sure that you do have somebody there for, to meet that 15-minute ETA, no matter what time of day or night it is and what's going on.
Okay. Anyone else? Um, I have a question, Jane. Do you accept or participate with AAA?
No, we do not.
Okay. And do you, how do you work with, um, customers that have their car towed? Do you deal with their insurance company or how is that handled?
If a customer's car is towed, if it is involved in an accident, uh, we immediately, uh, contact their insurance company if they provide that information to us to find out if they have full coverage. If they only have liability, we try to work with them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, tell them if they give us the title and just for the tow, we dispose of the car, or we give them names of a lot of salvage yards to buy cars.
Mm-hmm.
In whole, because we're not licensed implement, no one's licensed in Plymouth Township to part a car. So, we give them numbers of Rossis, Jamison, so they can take advantage of that. Or some people just leave them there. They, they just keep going because they're allowed to continue to buy cars and put them in their name.
Right.
There's, there's no stoppage there. So, they just don't feel it important to take their car out. And you can't get blood out of a stone.
Right.
How long you been towing for Conshohocken, Jane?
Pardon me?
How long have you been towing for Conshohocken?
Did I, has Jane weigh towed for Conshohocken?
Yeah.
Jane weighs towed for Conshohocken. I have to ga, it sounds terrible, but I have to gauge it on how long my husband's been gone. I guess, um, about 12 years.
Okay.
In the beginning, it was, we had to fight for it because they considered it a conflict of interest at the time. And I had to go to the state commission and explain to them that I answered the tow calls. He did not direct the towing because I answered the tow calls when the police department called. So, what would make him think that I would, he would answer the phones for the tow calls? So, that, it's been about 12 years.
Okay.
But I've been doing this since 1970. So, um.
So, I'm not familiar with that part. With what conflict?
I mean.
You're saying that there was a conflict?
In my husband's position, they felt that it was a conflict of interest.
He was the chief of police.
He was the chief of police. And they felt that he would pressure the officers to have cars towed. And it was, so we finally went through the whole series with the state and we proved that he never answered a tow call when the county radio called, nor did he ever answer the phone when the county radio called for him as a police. I had to answer the phone. He just, that was my job.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I earned that pension well, believe me.
Jane, how much staff do you have, um, that runs the 24/7 total?
How much what? I'm sorry.
Staff, employees?
We have a staff of 14 employees.
Jane, go ahead. No, go ahead. All right. Do you, you, I'm asking this for everyone. Do you have the capability to pro, to provide services ranging from disabled vehicles to complex commercial towing?
We have the facilities and the equipment, anything legally on the road. The flatbeds, the small wreckers, the heavy wreckers, the tractor and trailers.
And how do you handle if someone can't afford the services? Is, is there any discounts or payment?
Well, we, we go through the process and try to do everything we can to get paid. And if they just refuse to pay and abandon their car, we have to go through the abandonment process with the state, which it takes about three months to get a title. Then we junk it.
And then I just have one last question. Um, are you involved in any special interest groups that would be considered a conflict of interest with the borough?
No, I'm not. Nor is my son, who is the president of Jane Lee.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Do you need another minute, Gina?
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Management matters.
So, the next steps in the process, since you've now interviewed the two candidates, um, we will give you time to, again, digest the RFP submissions based off of the interviews that were conducted tonight. And then, the next step in this, if you're satisfied with the submissions that you received from the RFP, would be that, do you need a minute or, okay, um, would be that the next step, um, will be on an agenda for an appointment of a potential contractor for the borough of Conshohocken. So, I guess my one question for you this evening is, are you comfortable with the submissions that you've received from the RFP to move forward in the decision process?
We only got two.
We've only received two responses to the RFP itself.
Do you need more time?
The option that you would have is that you would have to re-advertise the RFP. You'd have to open it for a period of time similar to what was in this RFP. You would contact the two, the two bidders that did submit and let them know that you're reopening the RFP. You would see if you've received any other submissions. If you don't receive any other submissions, then you would have gone through that process again for really no purpose. The cost that would be included is the cost to re-advertise the RFP.
So, uh, Chief, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you have an officer here and you're here. How are their performance? You guys deal with them a lot?
They're, uh, you know, they've provided this, uh, both of them have been here for a long time.
I know it.
And they, they, they both provide a service to us.
We use them equally though, right? We split.
It's one, yeah, it's monthly. So, one's January, one's February, one's, you know, that's how.
So, we heard that one only has 14 employees and one has 50 employees. Do you see difference in service month over month?
I would say that there's, uh, the, the 50 employees improves their service.
But he covers a lot more land than.
And the turnpike.
Jay does. He covers the turnpike and all too. That's different. When you're covering a Pennsylvania turnpike, that's a lot of ground to cover.
Sure.
You know, so he has to have 50 employees, you know?
So.
Sounds like we have more questions and thoughts to.
Right. And, and we can, I think we can hold till, um, the voting meeting to make a decision and we can all discuss it. Okay?
Well, the, the, the way with the RFP is set up is that you have an extended period of time. So.
Yes.
It, it won't be back on the agenda for a vote in two weeks. It will be, if, I, we knew that there's a hish, there's a long history of the utilization of both of these towing country, companies. So, um, if you have questions that have generated from the RFP in the interviews tonight, I would urge you to reach out to either our staff or the chief of police. Um, we can answer those questions. And then, when you feel ready, we will put, place it on the next available agenda for a vote.
Okay.
Okay?
Everyone's good with that? Yes?
The goal would be to solidify something for the start of 2020.
2020. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Chief Mass? Okay. The next item on the agenda is to consider approving a block party request for St. Mark's Lutheran Church. Um, this request came into our office. The event is scheduled for Sunday, October 20th. It would be from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The location would be in front of St. Mark's Lutheran Church. The conversations with Reverend Penman have been very positive. Um, Kate Cosman has going, been going back and forth. Um, they have, we've reviewed the items that they've requested with both public services and the police, and we have no administrative concerns with this. My recommendation would be that you approve the block party request in just an essence of time. Um, I would ask if you're so inclined to approve the request this evening.
I'll make that motion.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries?
That's a good thing, right?
Hey! Easier than you thought, right?
Thank you.
I hope the event is very successful.
Yes.
Yeah. No rain. Is this the first time you're doing something like this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we're hopeful that if it goes well, we'll do it again next fall. This is, in conversations with our first leadership, we're placing Marcus for October Best Day, so we wanted to do something.
Great.
A little more open.
Great.
Great idea.
It's exciting.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Good.
We've received notice from Luke Smith from the Dog Park Advisory Committee that he would be resigning from his position, so my recommendation this evening would be that you accept his resignation, and our office would then advertise the vacancy for a three-year term beginning January 2020. I would need a motion if you're so inclined to consider the resignation of Luke Smith from the Dog Park Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next item is to consider the second addendum to the collective bargaining agreement for the police department. The negotiations on the collective bargaining agreement are for the periods of 2020, 2021, and 2022. I can tell you that the negotiations with the bargaining committee were very positive. I believe that the, that the agreement that's in front of you is fair. It is concise. It has been approved by legal, and you will see in your packets that it's also been signed off on by the collective bargaining members. If you are inclined, my recommendation would be that you would consider approving the second addendum to the police collective bargaining agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Karen, did you?
Yes, I said.
Okay. All opposed, motion carries.
Okay. The next item is to consider approving an RFP for zoning services for this evening. This is a discussion point. I wanted to put a draft in front of you of an RFP that is in the process of continuing to be drafted. It still needs to go to legal for review. We're working closely with Ms. Stettler, our zoning officer, to ensure that the RFP is concise and encompasses, not that I'm sure that would really be possible, all that you do. So, I've, I've, I've asked her for a list of what her responsibilities currently are, just so I can evaluate them, and I'm afraid of what that list will look like once it comes across my desk, so.
Are you gonna have it bound?
It might have to be bound.
Right, it won't be concise.
As you all know, Chris Stettler has announced that she will be retiring after 25 years of service to the borough of Concha Hocken on December 31st, 2019. I don't know if we'll be able to replace Chris.
No.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to say that we will be able to retain her in a part-time capacity. So, we'll be maintaining our walking encyclopedia, Concha Hocken Encyclopedia. Am I embarrassing you enough yet?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then let's get to the RFP. The RFP, again, is a draft. The concept here is that this is a short-term goal. We will bring in a consultant to provide zoning services for the borough, short-term. Long-term, we will be developing a staff organizationally that we will then present to you what that plan looks like. The RFP specifies scopes of services that this consultant will be responsible for, which includes most of what Chris currently does as the zoning officer. And again, I know that there are individuals that do business in this borough that are used to operating a certain way, and I think that having Chris in a part-time capacity will ease with that transition. And I'm sure she'll let me know if there's something that is not going well. But the idea here is to make this as seamless as possible for our residents, our businesses, and our visitors who do business in the borough. It's everything from scope of services for zoning, to the floodplain, to cafe licenses, to the selection process, to general administrative requirements and conditions. So, again, we are attempting to make this as concise and thorough as possible. It will be reviewed by legal, and then it will be in front of you for a formal vote to authorize me to advertise the RFP. And again, the goal is to have a consulting firm in place, starting in January, understanding that Chris will be on staff for the transitional, and Chris will also still be, we are in the midst of revising our zoning ordinance, so Chris has graciously offered to continue with that process until we are complete, because we are going section by section, and I can tell you that she does a good job keeping me focused in those meetings. So, any questions on the RFP for zoning services? Okay? We'll continue to work through that, and it'll be in front of you. Chief Gunning, do you wanna, since you're here, would you like to talk about the fire prevention event?
Good evening.
Good evening, Jane.
October 9th is, next week is Fire Prevention Week, so each year, Concha Hocken, Plymouth and White Marsh take a year and host a fire prevention demonstration, and this year is our turn. So, we will be doing demonstrations, giveaways, letting everybody come out and see the apparatus. October 9th, we'll shut the street down around 6:00. The event starts about 6:30, and hopefully, we'll be all wrapped up and done by 9:00. So, if you're around, please come out. We'll be doing hands-on stuff, and it's gonna be fun for the kids.
Tim, it's on Fayette.
It's on Fayette Street, between 3rd and 6th Avenue. I gotta ask Chief Metz for some signs and Mr. Ray for some barricades, so we can make this event.
Well, you've now just termed Mr. Ray.
Mr. Ray.
Ray.
That's my boss.
Oh, God.
Who asked you to come up to the podium?
You did.
Yeah, I know.
So, will all the fire companies be there?
Yes, so Plymouth, both companies, White Marsh, both are companies, and I just called Chief Frank and Field from West Concha Hocken, invited him tonight, so, so like I said, each company has a certain demonstration that they will perform for the public and, and giveaways, so it'll be a fun night.
Yeah.
Kids always love that. October 9th, 6:30 to 8:30, streets close, starting at 6:00, and it's between 3rd Avenue and 6th Avenue on Fayette.
Yep, and hopefully, we'll be out of there by 9:00.
That's good. Thank you, Chief Gunning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, boss.
I can still remember, stop, drop, and roll from my fire prevention. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss ordinance 7 of 2019, amending Chapter 11 of the borough ordinance to include the installation and maintenance of rear house numbers for residential rental properties. Mr. Peters?
So, council has discussed several time, the times, the concept of requiring rear house numbers for several reasons, not the least of which is for emergency management purposes. We thought on an administrative level that a nice way to begin to roll out that requirement would be to put it into your residential rental license permit requirements. So, if council approves this ordinance, it would require, at time of re-upping the licenses for residential rental, it would require the placement of house numbers, both on the front, and we hope and assume that most houses have a number on the front, and also to the rear of the, of the structure. And if there are circumstances where there is a, for example, a garage that's blocking view of the house, there is a requirement that they place the house number on the garage. So, it's set up to be pretty simple, I hope, and we now have a method through which to require the installation, because it's through this licensing process. So, it's a good first step, and we'll see how it functions. And Bob, this is for you.
But, Anita brought this to my attention, that it's not just the resident at the rental properties, it's for all the residents to do this, to put the addresses.
Right.
Eventually, that's absolutely correct.
But that's what we're trying to get to.
Right.
Just not the rental properties.
Yep, so, so the reason to do it for the rentals is because we have a process in place, so we can force them to do it. You are correct, for the public to know, it is the intention to do it for all residential property.
So, step one.
It's a step one, and step two is the residents.
So, it, step two, correct. So, so for this evening, I, I don't know that we really expected you to vote on it in terms of advertisement, but review it. If you have any questions, please ask me over the next couple of weeks.
Okay. What houses don't have numbers on the front?
Right, well.
We put it, we put it, we added that in there as well.
Right. Could we have an article in the next Borough Magazine, from the police perspective and the firefighter's perspective, that if you don't have these numbers, your life could be in jeopardy?
Your life could be in jeopardy.
So, be sure.
It's for their own safety.
Right, it is for their own safety.
And just so you know, eventually, you're gonna be required to do it anyway, so you face forward to it, yeah.
So, is it something that we can ask for new development, so as there's new houses?
Everybody gonna do it eventually.
Yep.
But, you know, that's something that we can kind of take more of an active role now.
And, and we can even, you know, as we continue through this process, we're, we're revising the zoning ordinance. Eventually, we're gonna have to look at this out, or we can think of adding it, adding provisions for new development. The, the toughest part of this is going to be rolling it out for existing residential properties, but we'll get there. Any questions, please let me know over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mike.
For existing properties, just so you know, we do have the UNO that everybody has to get when they sell their properties. It will be part of the UNO. So, right now, in Concha Hocken, 2% to 2.5% of the houses live every year. That 2.5% of the houses will have to have the numbers from the back. So, it's getting around properties and the residential, starting in the early.
Thank you, Ray. Good. Yeah, I'm sure, do you have anything to say?
Sure. It's a busy time of year. So, first off, I'm sure you will all echo this, but I want to thank all of our borough staff, and especially Kate Cosman, our communications director, for her work on Fun Fest.
Oh, my God.
The feedback I've had is, is just universally positive, and I, I know we all had a really good time on, on Saturday, so, so thank you all. It was a fabulous day. We have the Crab Fest at the VFW this Saturday at 3:00. If you need tickets, you can contact Walter Hartnett, or go onto the VFW social media and request tickets. You can also stop in anytime, and they will be happy to sell you a ticket. And then Saturday, the 12th, is also the Rotary Beer Festival. That's from 12 to 4:00, so it's one of our big events for the year, so we, we thank everyone for their support, as always.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Bob?
Yeah, I thought the presentation that Ray and the active shooter that the police department put on tonight, but, you know, that should be done at the meeting the 3rd Wednesday. We're only getting to, and I don't mean nothing wrong here, that we have 8, 10 employees here, and maybe 10 res, six or seven residents. This should be done on a televised meeting, so people can see what you guys have done and what you're, because that day, that active shooter that we all participated in, it was terrific. But there should have been more people wondering what was going on, because it wasn't people, it was early in the morning, but there wasn't a lot of the neighbors coming out saying, "What's going on? What's going on?" I mean, I think we need to put a lot of stuff, just like the house numbers, going the front and the back. We have to let the, and that's why I'm asking about the cable channel, too. How many people watch that? Because they should be listening to that, not just the 20 people in the audience here. So, if I want to say something, I want to get it out to the residents, I say it at the cable meeting, not when there's already 20 people sitting here. So, I think that was a great thing you did tonight. I think the whole thing was great, but I think we should have done that next Wednesday, or the Wednesday that we have to, our.
It's a good point, Bob.
You know?
Yeah.
So, that the residents can see that.
I was going to ask.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Jane?
No, no updates.
Jane?
No.
Good. Mike?
I'm okay.
Chief Metz?
I had one thing. I got an email from the Chief County Detective. DA's offices have an Explorer program. If you're not familiar with Explorers, they're government, that get the opportunity to be in an organization, they're hosting it, and they're all involved in it, finances and corporations and all that kind of stuff, law enforcement phase. The Food and Police have like a really successful one that they run, but they're running one, and it seems that they're having trouble getting people signed up. So, if you know anybody, a teenager.
I was gonna ask, what's the age?
I'm not sure. I have to look. If anybody's interested that you know, that may be in scouting or anything, they can get in touch with me. I have to recommend them. So, they can get in touch with me if you know anyone in your travels that might be interested.
That's a really good program. That's where Eileen well and got her start, with White Marsh Township, when she was in high school.
Yeah, they are good programs. You try and do these things, and no one's interested.
Right. Right, that's unfortunate.
How long is this program? So, it's for teenagers, and then?
It's weeks long. I mean, I can give you, anybody that might be interested, I can give them all the information. I just got an email reminding all the teams that, you know, they're trying to get this going.
So, it's a cost for coming county?
Yeah.
No cost, right? No cost to them?
No, it's, it's run by the DA's office, and there's no cost.
That's great.
Thank you.
Anyone for public comment? Please come up, state your, name and address.
PD, my name is Ed Zale. I live over at the condo, the Grand. Just wanted to ask, is there any updated information? I heard the gentleman, I believe he was speaking about O'Neill's property, where the heliport, so that's not going to happen for another couple of years, the development there?
As of right now, it's been, it's just being continued in the zoning, from the zoning perspective.
How about 400 West Elm? Anything gonna happen there from next year, too?
Right now, we have nothing that's been formally submitted to the borough.
Okay. So, when do you think Eight Tower, when will they start working on their property?
Well, Eight Tower is built.
Well, the one that's gonna be.
So, Seven Tower Bridge.
Yeah.
Right now, they're through their land development. They are, from what we've been told, finalizing some business items on their end, and then they would still have to close on the property. So, I don't have an update on when they, as their private entity.
It'll be another year before they start.
I would say no, but I don't, I don't have, I can't tell you when they will have all of their items together, ready to process, to close on the property with their loans in order to be able to start building.
How about SEPTA, their transportation center? Any idea there?
So, what we've been told is that SEPTA is trying to escalate their process and start construction, but we've been told that numerous times by them, and then they've gone away for about six months, and then they come back. So, unfortunately, I don't have a definitive answer for you on timeline.
How about the 300 luxury apartment building next to SEPTA?
51 Washington Street?
Yeah.
So, what we've been told is that the current owner is in the process of trying to sell the property.
So, they won't do the 300 apartments?
They are attempting, from what I've been told, to utilize the same plan in some way, shape, or form, but the current owner will not be moving forward with building. The sale has not gone, gone through yet, as of today.
So, did the county or the borough put up all the nice, big, yellow signs at the railroad tracks at Chesh, Cherry, and at Ash, and at Harry Street? You know, the big, great signs that say pedestrian and bike crossing.
I believe that was us.
It was, county put up some, SEPTA purchased some, and the borough put them up for SEPTA. But they, they put the locations that they wanted on, they put all the information, and it was all engineered where they exactly wanted those on.
They're pretty good.
Technically, on SEPTA's property, it's within their 30-foot, right alone. So, it was, it was only that they purchased them and asked us to do it. So it was, it was only that they purchased them and asked us to do it. Our department was to, to, to.
Cause they're very clear. They're like four foot high, three foot wide, very visible yellow. So at least that's a good start for crossing the tracks and everything. I still don't think, Chief, I'm not sure how many people are gonna go up the steps and over, you know, back and forth, but at least, I saw one person do it.
I just did it.
You might have saw him.
That was him that you saw.
Okay. Hey, I did it.
All right. Now, last question. Most of the businesses have sidewalks all over Conchi, but to Harry Street is where the cafe, the station cafe is. And that's just pebbles and dirt. Is there any reason why that business doesn't have to have a sidewalk? All the other places do. And the reason I ask, I walk that way. And so it's about 50 feet to Harry where the cafe is.
If I could answer that question, that's part of, that's part of what Sora knows us on the, um, accessibility to the SEPTA train station. That there's going to be a walkway that's gonna be put in by the Sora project. Part of the project was that they had to provide handicap accessible walkway to the SEPTA train station from the Sora complex. That's part of the current train.
Yeah, but the Sora complex, isn't that where? But that's all sidewalks and everything going down?
Yeah, but that, the extension, they, they put, they have a highway open opening permit for the intersection, which they have to redo. They have to provide a handicap accessible route from their building all the way around to where you're referring to, to the train station. We met with the PUC of our part this, uh, not more than, I think, four or three weeks ago with Borough Engineer to discuss it.
So it might be another six months?
It's for them to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please come up and state your name? And address?
Just more? Hi, I'm Loretta Molnar and I live on 303 Angel Alley. Um, there's a real problem, um, poplar. People throw their dog, doggy doo-doo bags all over the sidewalk, the grass next to the tree. If I put something out there, an old recyclable can or a new one, there's all kinds of stuff in there, all kinds of stuff. Pizza boxes, dog bottles, trash. I'm on the Environmental Action Committee and it gets me really ticked. Now, that's all I'm gonna say, but, um, can we put some, you know how you have them at the park? The, um, the, I, I think there's steel for the dog waste. We need them. There are so many dogs. I live on Angel Alley and from Angel Alley to Hector, all the way down to the train station. There are so many dogs and a lot of them are, they're not, they don't have yards. They're walk, they're, you know, they're companion dogs for walking and there's no, I haven't seen one near me at all. So, um, and they also, I mean, I, I understand it's a touchy situation, but it just seems like my corner gets it. I don't know why. And there's nothing up there and that's, that Poplar Street is like a main, um, walkway up to the restaurants. From Pepperchini's up to, um, the Lucky Dog Spring Mill Avenue. Um, and there's been so many people that I've seen without bags or they don't know what to do with it. So they throw it right next to the property of, of, um, of Angel Alley. So I'm not gonna put anything out there anymore. I used to put it in a recycle bin. People used to put their bottles in, but then they just throw everything in. So, um, it's just a problem. I don't know what to do. I've tried to clean up myself. I've cleaned up glass in the dirt. I've tried to weed it. I tried to put stones on it. It's not the rental, it's not the landlord's property. Cause it's, it's, there's a tree there and there's a sidewalk. So it's not his property. It's Poplar Street that we're having the problem with. So, um, you know, I felt funny saying all this stuff about it, but I'm really, you know. I lived in Norristown and I saw them throw everything out, you know, and I don't want it to be that way. It can be better and I'm hoping that it will. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Good evening, Joe.
Hi, everybody. Joe Ferrano, 412 Old Elm Street. I've been, uh, in, I've been talking to some neighbors clearly about the truck problem that we have down in the first ward. And, um, trying to wrap my head around the engineer study that was done. And I come to understand that the study was only to see if the length or the width, excuse me, of the lanes were big enough to house the trucks. And no mention of the noise, how it destructs, destroys the road, how it is starting to destroy people's property. People have cracks in their foundations from the trucks. They run all night, past 2:00 PM. They start up very early, probably around 4:00 AM. And I heard a lot about how there was an engineer study done and it was only to see if the lanes were wide enough. And then I come to learn that actually on Corson Street, which is right next to my neighborhood, it's not wide enough. But eventually with this 400 West Elm Street project, it'll get wide enough when they do the construction. Now, that's been, of course, delayed multiple years, probably three or four now. It got, most recently, as, uh, Mr. Barton said, got extended another year. So how long do we have to put up with that? And if that study is really just to see how wide the lanes have to be, when will other considerations come into play? Not to mention the traffic that's gonna be, like Ed here talked about all that construction. An easy way to stop traffic or help traffic on that road is to eliminate 18-wheelers on the main road. So I'd like to understand, and I've been in contact with Pendot, who's relayed this to the Borough Engineer, when will these other considerations come into play for a new study to be done?
You talking about Elm?
West Elm. West Elm Street.
West Elm.
West Elm?
West Elm Street.
You talking about the, the truck route, correct?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
The existing truck.
The existing truck route, right.
Well, I don't know if you'd wanna call it a truck route or not.
It's been a truck.
It's a Pendot road. I don't know if it's a truck route.
Always been a truck route for a hundred years, maybe.
Well, sure. Trucks have been on it for a hundred years.
No, it's an actual truck route.
Okay.
Right?
Through a residential, through a residential neighborhood now.
It's a truck route.
Well, are, are you asking a question or are you?
No, I'm asking if the Borough would consider doing another study.
So we didn't do a study. So we reached out to our traffic engineer who works for Penoni Associates and voiced our concerns. Basically, the concerns that you just laid out. They, Penoni and Associates went to Pendot and re-formally requested, which we had to do multiple times to get them to do a study. That was a lengthy process just to get them to do it and they did come out. They did evaluate the lane widths. Um, they also did a brake retarder study. So I don't know if they communicated that to you, but they're, through the noise study and the brake retarder and the lane width, they identified that since it's a state road and it's Pendot owned, that per their regulations, the truck restriction was not warranted. So at that point, that's what was communicated back to us.
Yeah, well, I get a different story from Pendot. I've been speaking with two whom I think is the, is the right person there and they said that they've never been requested by the Borough to do any sort of study on any of these other topics.
Well, I'm looking at the letter that was issued by Pendot on August 30th, 2018, that was signed by Ashwin Patel.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that the engineer study was done. I'm, I'm disputing that it wasn't done to the extent that it should with everything else, all the other considerations that should be done on that road.
Should be done based on whose authority, I guess is the question.
Authority, I mean, it's, it's about residents' well-being. It's about residents' safety. It's about.
Are you asking us to go back and ask for other conditions to be looked at?
Yes, I am. I'm asking you to, um, engage your Borough Engineer, who's been in contact with the Pendot official that I've been talking with.
And who is that, Joe?
I, I can't remember his name off the top of my head. I, I have it in my email.
For him for us?
Yeah, no, I have it in my email. I can get it for you. But, um, yeah, I, I have sent, you know, a few emails already. He said he's relayed that to the Borough Engineer.
Okay.
So.
I can tell you, I can tell you this. And Mr. Ray can back me up. We approached, well, our engineer did, approached Pendot on our behalf, at our request, meaning the Borough, not just me and Ray. And we gave them a bunch of reasons why we thought it shouldn't be a truck route.
Should not?
Parking, yeah.
Right, should not.
Proximity to the road, all the things you're talking about. We did that, went down. Cause I, I agree with you. There's a lot of trucks that go down there.
It's, it's a hundred an hour, easy.
Damage their road, you know, so we went to them and said, these are, this is what we have and this is what we think. It's a residential neighborhood. There's cars parked on the street. There's a curb in the road. There's complaints about noise, that, that, everything that you talked about, we went to our engineer who approached Pendot about.
The first step in that was, it was communicated to council that we were going to request that. So I, I hear you and I, it's been done. So we literally had our Chief of Police and our Executive Director of Operations stand on the side of the road and evaluate what the concerns we've been receiving. From that evaluation, we discussed with Borough Council, asking our traffic engineer, because it costs money, to go to Pendot and formally request them to evaluate it. So I think the more noise that gets to Pendot, the better. If the Borough is already agreeing with the concerns that you have, then maybe if it's more of a collective effort, we'll get, we'll get some traction.
I'll make as much noise as they make on the road. I guarantee you that.
I just don't want, I wanna make sure it's very clear that this council already approved the study to be done.
But that study, right, was only for the?
But that's my question.
But that's not the concerns, the concerns.
If that's what we asked for or is that how they answered us?
That's the answer we received.
So they, they may have negated to answer what we originally asked for.
Well, then that shouldn't be acceptable, right? I mean, it just shouldn't be acceptable then. I mean, it's, it's a, it's an all-night, all-night thing. I mean, you should see, you should hear, if you stand on some of those, those houses, those porches over there, it is unbelievably loud, unbelievably loud. I hear it and I'm a block off of it and I still hear the, feel the vibrations and hear the truck noise all night long. I mean, it's a real big issue, not to mention, you're walking down the street, there, I could touch these 18-wheelers as I walk my two kids down the street. I could touch it.
So the question is, they gave us a report that we already paid for. Can we write them a letter that said, you didn't, in the report, you failed to?
Address.
Address these, was that studied? I mean, did they study it? Let's ask them if they studied it and if they just didn't put it in the report.
I, I have answers to some of these questions and I was at, yesterday, that, and this topic came up. So they have a specific set of criteria that they follow for a truck route. And that area is within their criteria. We have a second area in town that has similar problems. Gain your word to the 600, 500 block, Patrick Street.
Right.
Going into White Marsh Township, where you on one side literally have a five-foot sidewalk and then somebody's front door.
Exactly.
So we do not have the same complaints from that area, but it is a similar situation. It's a state road. Trucks are allowed on that road. Any size truck is allowed on that road. And that fits their criteria. So remember, it's the state of Pennsylvania. There are places in the state of Pennsylvania where that's the north. There, there's trucks within feet of people's houses. Cause that's just the way it is. That's, so it fits within their criteria. There are certain things that are out there right now that may relieve that. Some of it has to do with turnpike. Turnpike coming in on the Ridge Pike. Another thing is, what we're waiting for the response back is, because this has just happened yesterday, was whether, what, what is the lifespan of the quarry? We'll cut you off at the road. And it appears to be at the end of its lifespan. If that's the case, I think a lot of the, the truck traffic that myself and Chief observed that day had to do with that quarry. If that's eliminated, it will relieve some of it. But it's not like they, they did not follow their, they followed the same criteria. That's the way Pendot works. They have a specific set of criteria for everything. Concrete, pavement, splits, everything. That's what they followed. That's what that letter and the response to that letter was based on. You have to go to another level, which our engineer has been doing. He has not let that, or traffic engineer, I'm sorry, has been doing. He has not let that subject go away. He has been dealing with Pendot, but it's a slow process. There are problems in this state that it takes after, it, it takes, uh, 10 years to get a stop sign put into an intersection that Pendot has. It's just, that's, that, that's just what we're facing. And the relief from 400 West Elm Street, the Equis project they're referring to, I'm unaware of any widening of that.
That's just what he said to me, yeah.
They might be redesigning it, but widening it, that's, those are two different, two different things.
Yeah, I mean, it's not necessarily about the widening it. It's, it's about straightening it to a degree that the truck, whatever ratio that they need is, is, you know, done.
That is a problematic turn. I think we've been, we've been down this, but they can all agree that that's, that's the problem. It's not like this is gone on that year. It's just, we're dealing with a much bigger entity that unfortunately now has changed. A lot of hands have changed with Pendot. The people that we deal on a, on a normal basis or on a regular basis aren't there. So we're, we've been doing some relationship now too. It's just not gonna be, it's not gonna be something overnight. They are familiar. The person that I spoke to, who's the director from Region 6 and the maintenance director from Region 6, they are aware of everybody's name who is making complaints to the Borough Attorney. They, they.
They went to the list, yeah.
Like, they're not aware that this is going on.
Well, I mean, that's, it's the vocal majority and it's, that's making those calls, right? And, but there's, there's hundreds more, guarantee you.
Saying it's not going to be that year. I know it's, it's frustrating, frustrating for us. There's nothing more that I think we both would have liked to do was the next day, go in front of Region 6 and say, "You need to change this tomorrow because of that." They would have just looked at us like we had to do that. They have to re-engineer, redesign. So the township would be involved in this because of where the trucks are gonna end up. You have the transfer, you have the trash machine plan to take some of the traffic there. They're redesigning, looking at redesigning, Cowal, there, there are tons of things that are going on. But they're not, right now, they are not going to change that as a truck route. There's no, there's nothing that, there's nothing that's been said by them that's gonna change it right now.
Right.
It's gonna take a while.
Did, did they mention at all when Lafayette would be open?
Uh, I think that, that actually, that actually, uh, that did come up yesterday as a matter of fact. And, and there's an issue on Ridge Pike between the county, the state buying some of Ridge, or Montgomery County turning over some of Ridge Pike over to the state. Ridge Pike now is county road. The state will ultimately take over that whole section and then there's, there's a plan to redo it and it's a 2022 by, by 2022. That includes the ramps. That includes redoing Ridge Pike.
Cause then we could bring the trucks in off of there and over and it would avoid maybe.
There's a possibility that the quarry will be in existence by 2022, which again, will leave, will leave a lot of the problems that I think we're seeing, we're seeing there.
Well, if you, if you drive up that road, obviously there's, there's 18-wheelers parked there. There's probably 50 of them, you know? Like, there's concrete plants. There's the Concha Hocken recycling plant that's up there. I mean, it's not limited to the clean fill, um, clearly.
Cause that's all in industry.
Yeah, it's all industry, absolutely.
So they could, they could, if that's open, then they wouldn't have to come down, is what I'm saying.
Perhaps. I just don't know where they would get on that. That's the only problem. But on top of that, I mean, if you think about this new Lafayette extension coming up, there's cars that are coming off of that, right? If they, if they need to go into Philadelphia, like where do you think that they're gonna go, right? So I'm just, I'm telling you that this is a, this is going to grow exponentially as we grow as a Borough. When all that development in the first ward starts to go up, and it will, and there's gonna be way more cars on that road, there's gonna be way more cars coming down Concha Hocken Pike, or Concha Hocken Road because of that Lafayette extension. And it's gonna be backed up all the way up instead of just to the Equis building. So it's, it's.
You, you have to remember though, that those cars are not from Concha Hocken.
No, I, I acknowledge that a hundred percent. I'm just saying that.
So, I mean, there's not much we can do about the truck.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, stopping the trucks from going into the residential area would eliminate a lot of, of length of cars, you know, every hour. So.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
So it sounds like we are still working on it. We are not ignoring it, Joe. Anyone else? Anyone else? Meeting adjourned.